Okay, if you all would like to join me in standing. We'll recite the Lord's Prayer and then we'll do the pledge and then I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join me in reciting the Lord's Prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Commissioner Ogul, would you lead us in the pledge?
One of the pledges, to do the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which thanks, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll now call this meeting to order, the Sevier County Commission. And Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Commissioners, please check present. Madam Clerk, how many do we have present?
Twenty-two present, three absent.
Hey, we do have a quorum. Next item of business on the agenda is consideration of minutes from the previous commission meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please bring those proposed minutes to the floor for action? You have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Now, do we have any discussion, corrections, or additions to the minutes as presented? No further action on this item. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed to the vote? Commissioners, please cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you announce the vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Any tar approved. We're down to item number four, which is consideration of reports from commission committees. You also received those in the mail. Madam Clerk, would you please bring the reports, proposed reports, to the floor for action? We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the commission committee minutes. Do we have any discussion, additions, or corrections to the commission committee minutes as presented? Hey, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote. Madam Clerk, would you announce the vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Hey, committee minutes are approved. We are now down to public comment on agenda items. We did not have anyone request a public comment on an agenda item, so we will move and open the public hearing on the rezoning items. And we have one rezoning item that's in your packet. Resolution 2024-10-01, which is amend the zoning resolution for Sevier County by rezoning tax map 110E, Group A, Parcel 25.00, from A1 Agricultural to C2 General Commercial. Madam Clerk, would you please bring Resolution 2024-10-01 to the floor for any action to We have a motion and a second to approve now. Mr. Timble, do you have any comments concerning the rezoning resolution? Commissioners, do you have any discussion concerning this proposed resolution? It's 4543 East Parkway, and the Sevier County Planning Commission's recommendation is Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please bring Resolution 2024-10-01 to the floor for action? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Commissioners, would you please cast your vote? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. Item number seven, which is consideration of Resolution 2024-10-02, to establish the Sevier County Building and Fire Board of Appeals and confirm the appointment of board members. Madam Clerk, if you would, proceed to that resolution for action. We have a motion and a second. Do, and this is to establish this board, and I'm going to recognize our Chief Puckett to come up and give you a brief synopsis of what this resolution does and why it is in...
So, as you know, January of this year, we've become an exempt jurisdiction in Sevier County regarding our codes, program, and with that, through the state of Tennessee, that better... We need a Board of Appeals. That way, if we have someone from the general public that wants to challenge or question one of the decisions made, that we have a board that they can plead their case on. This board that we are recommending would actually be used by the Building Department and the fire codes program as well. It'd be a joint board for those rare times that we have questions.
Questions from members of the board concerning the resolution appointing these members of the Sevier County Building and Fire Board of Appeals. Question. Thank you, Chief. Have moved to the voting screen. Commissioners, would you cast your votes? There any requests to change a vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Resolution's properly adopted. Now, we are to consideration of Resolution 2024-10-03, which is the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $10 million worth of general obligation bonds of Sevier County. Now proceed to item eight. Bring that to the floor. We have a motion and a second, and I'm going to recognize our Finance Director. Baker, if she will come and give a brief description of this resolution?
Yes, this is just the initial resolution to issue the bonds for the 2024 calendar year. And this will start at the 20-day protest period, and then we'll come back in November and bring the detailed resolution, and then we'll sell the bonds in December.
This is the last bond issue for the Court's building.
Yes.
This concludes all of ours. And as you all know, we have been... We pay off about 10 million a year, and because of the Court's building, we've been issuing 10 million a year, so we haven't really increased our debt, but we are building this Court's building. So, this is just the last of those bond issues, and the Court's building's planned to be completed September of next year, I think. Is that right? Questions from members of the commission concerning this resolution? Hearing no questions. Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Any commissioner like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Resolution's been properly adopted. We are down now to item number nine, which is consideration of Resolution 2024-10-04, which is an update of the emergency medical services fee. So, Madam Clerk, if you would please move that resolution to the voting screen. We have a motion and a second, and I'll recognize our Ambulance Director, Mr. Ballantyne, to give an explanation concerning the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the commission. This resolution, if approved, would increase the fee structure for ambulance transports. Just to give you a little back history here, we haven't made any adjustments to ambulance fees in 17 years. Chief Cole with Gatlinburg Fire and myself, about nine months ago, began to collaborate about looking at our ambulance fees. We try to keep our fees, with us being the two primary ambulance services in the county, we try to keep our fees together. And so, we solicited, we both use the same third-party billing company, and we solicited them to do a survey and do a study of our fees compared to other ambulance services. And so, we looked at 12 other ambulance services within our 16-county region and in Tennessee as a whole, and found that we were kind of behind the average in most every category. And thankfully, Medicare actually raised their fee schedule to a certain degree. So, with that, we're losing guaranteed money on federal transports of Medicare patients and such. And so, we together got, Chief Cole and I, and we decided on a fee schedule that we would like to propose. And out of all of these 12 ambulance services, we're certainly not going to be above or higher than anybody. We picked a middle-of-the-road fee schedule that we feel like is still something that would be acceptable to the people who use our service, but also knowing that, from my standpoint, my 101 operating budget has increased $4.5 million since we last adjusted ambulance fees. So, that's my recommendation to, or why, you know, I would like to recommend this, just from the standpoint, it's obviously costing all of our departments more money to operate. And so, looking at the revenue and what our fee schedule probably should be, that's why I want to recommend this fee schedule change to the commission. And as I told the committees, you know, we put a lot of work into this, and again, we're not trying to be the highest fee anywhere. We want to be kind of in the middle of the road and still provide the great service that our employees do. So, we'd be happy to entertain any questions from the commission.
Any question from any member of the commission? Hey, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. Hearing none. Commissioners, would you all cast your votes? Any commissioner like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Item number 10, consideration of Resolution 2024-10-05, which is to appropriate funds to Mountain Ways and Mountain Tough in response to the Hurricane Eileen flooding. Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Resolution 2024-10-05. And we have a motion and a second to approve this, and I'm going to recognize our EMA Director, Mr. Joe Ayers. He's, I think, going to give us a little update about the flooding and our response to it, and then I'll talk a little bit about this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I want to start off thanking all of you commissioners. This event that we saw here a few weeks ago has definitely been unprecedented for our neighbors. We've witnessed disaster ourselves in 2016, and unfortunately, they're having to endure a similar event themselves that we did not experience the same as they did. This commission has been very supportive in providing funding for us to look at flooding as a serious threat to this community and allowing us to put technology in place where we're putting real-time stream monitoring that gives us early flood warning, similar to what Gatlinburg's had for many years. We've also partnered with the Army Corps of Engineers to develop a flood simulation product that's still in development, but was actually utilized during this event. And the National Weather Service advised us that we could see over 10 inches of rain from this event. And we did see every bit of rain that they forecasted. Some information we had from the Army Corps of Engineers made it look like that downtown Sevierville was going to flood, very similar to what we saw in the 1960s, to where it had us very concerned. We opened the EOC Thursday. After a lot of the rains started coming down, we started seeing flooding. We maintained that operation until Friday afternoon, to where the rain had subsided and we started seeing waters recede. Fortunately for us, we saw a lot of the rain waters only flood the areas that were accustomed to flooding. We had, I believe, one or two actual water rescues in the county that day, unlike our neighbors to the northeast. We were aware that the tributaries to the Douglas Lake were very inflated and rising, and TVA made us aware that we could see additional waters and have to release unprecedented amounts of water come Saturday and throughout the following week, because water levels had been at a post-summer level and had already risen by Friday afternoon to above summer levels. TVA had to release all four spillways Saturday, and unfortunately, they weren't sure how much water they were going to have to release, because they were doing that in efforts to make sure that the dam did not become threatened, as you heard in other communities that had potential failures. TVA unfortunately was not able to give us forecasts of where we may see flooding, and by nine o'clock, oh, I'm sorry, 10 o'clock that morning, we saw communities already flooding to the point to where local emergency services felt necessary to evacuate areas ahead of any floodwaters before people got trapped and required rescuers to put themselves in harm's way. There was many individuals that were displaced with the first 24 hours, but fortunately, I can say that we had no rescuers have to do any night operations to put themselves in harm's way. We were able to get folks out of the harm's way during the time periods that we saw that the waters were going to rise. On Sunday, because waters came up on Saturday, TVA actually told us they're still going to be rising, it would be after lunchtime on Sunday before they reduce that flow. We were very fortunate that the flow at 69,000 CFS was the highest that they released. They actually told us it was going to go up to 72,000 CFS. Basically, what we saw at 10 o'clock was down in the 40,000 CFS. So, they doubled it by the time we come to Sunday. So, we opened the EOC back up on Saturday. Fire, law enforcement, EMS coordinated efforts along with the Highway Department to try and make sure that nobody was impacted or threatened during that event. Unfortunately, we did have some folks that were displaced for additional few days after the waters were beginning to recede on Sunday. Unfortunately, we had to keep some folks out of their homes through Thursday, because waters would not allow them to return home, because the vehicles couldn't travel the roadway to enter those residence. They also didn't have power. Most of those folks had power later Thursday into Friday morning before utilities were fully restored. Fortunately, we assessed the damages to have approximately 66 homes impacted directly from the floodwaters from this event, and we did not fortunately see the devastation that the folks in northeast Tennessee saw. So, we're very fortunate. We did receive the request to go support Cock County and our neighbors in Unicoi County. I know the Sheriff, Chief Puckett, sent personnel to the neighboring communities. I was proud that we were able to send five individuals to go to Unicoi County and open their EOC and manage their EOC during their time of need. We've been very fortunate for those other communities to come help us in our times of need, and we were just grateful to be able to return the favor in this situation. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from any member of the commission?
I don't have any questions, but I just, number one, I want to thank you, Joe, for everything you're doing, because in 2016, we could not have done it without the help of our brothers and sisters, and just like Cock County couldn't do it without you. So, I definitely want to thank, I definitely want to thank the Sheriff's Department, because they're going over there and helping and patrolling the area and helping them out. So, I just want to say thank you for everything.
The comments or questions? Thank you, Joe. Let me explain a little bit about this resolution that we're getting ready to consider. First of all, as you all probably know, Dolly Parton, you all know and love, had pledged $2 million to help the victims of the floods in neighboring Cock County and Upper East Tennessee. And she did it through an organization that's already existing called Mountain Ways, which Joe and Jesse Baker had set up a year ago. So, this resolution has two aspects to it. One of them is that, and the other one is the Mountain Tough. If you all remember, in 2016, we had an organization that was created to help the victims of the fire called Mountain Tough. And that organization has stayed in existence since 2016, and because if we ever had another disaster, which we hoped we wouldn't, it could be reactivated and we could use it to help victims of that disaster. So, Mountain Tough has been reactivated and is in the process of contacting the folks that had damage in this area below the dam, and they have set up, Mountain Tough, as my understanding, has set up a procedure similar to what was followed during the fires, with a similar amounts and criteria and everything to what was followed during the fires. So, what this resolution does, as far as Mountain Tough is concerned, there are some monies, and we don't know exactly, because the Dollywood Foundation has those monies, and they've talked about transferring those to Mountain Tough. So, there's some monies that are going to be transferred to Mountain Tough. We don't know exactly how much, but what this resolution does is says the county will appropriate up to $100,000, should it be necessary, to Mountain Tough to provide for the victims of the flood in that area. So, Mountain Tough is going to get money from the Dollywood Foundation and also it from the county if it's necessary. So, and it's a similar process to what occurred during the fires. So, that's one aspect of this. The other aspect of this is that the three cities, Sevierville, Pigeon Forge, and Gatlinburg, and the county have agreed to appropriate money to help our neighbors, and to do it through this Mountain Ways organization that I told you about. Each, the county and each city is going to propose to appropriate 125,000, and that's the county's portion. Each city's appropriating the same amount of money. And in our discussions, it proposed that of that 500,000, 250,000 will go to Cock County, and then 250,000 will be distributed to the other counties in Upper East Tennessee that had the flooding. Unicoi, I know Unicoi had probably the most damage. Unicoi, Johnson, Washington, Green, all of those counties had significant damage. So, it will be distributed to those. We'll have a report from Mountain Ways about that distribution and how it impacted those individuals, just like the funds from Dolly Parton, and also all of the Parton Enterprises are contributing another million dollars. So, what this resolution does is appropriate $125,000 to Mountain Ways for our neighbors, 250 going to Cock County, 250 the rest of the district, and not to exceed 100 to go to Mountain Tough, should they need it after they transfer their funds. Is there any question from any member of the commission concerning this resolution? If not, commissioners, would you all cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Resolution's been properly adopted. We're now down to item number 11, which is consideration of Resolution 2024-10-06, authorize the county mayor to execute lease agreement and appropriate funds for parcel 049JB 037.00. Madam Clerk, if you would move to that resolution for our consideration. We have a motion and a second to approve it, I think. And now we can have discussion. This has been through, this resolution has been through two committees, the Intergovernmental Committee and the Budget Committee, and what is, authorizes me as the county mayor to execute a lease on what is presently the Carl Hatcher Furniture Building. If you know Marty, most of you bought furniture from him at one time. So, this resolution authorizes a lease, and they have agreed to this, and it has been... Some of the things that is talked about that are going to go in this, we have a probation department that has two houses leased at present. That probation department, we understand that the lease is up this summer, and there's an indication that they're not going to renew the lease on those two homes. So, we'll have a probation department that is going to have to move. We also have about 40 or 50 piling cabinets that we have a, need a portable trailer that they're stored in for the Tax Assessor's Office. That is going to be up there. We're going to move our maintenance department up there, as well as our IT department, because they don't have sufficient space. We're also going to have a storage area where we try to buy items like paper towels and toilet papers in bulk, because it's cheaper. We're going to have a storage area for that at this facility, and they even look at some kind of ambulance service facility there in the future. All of these things are planned for the building, and as I said, the finance committee... And as I said, the Budget Finance Committee, Budget and the Department of Management Committee have voted. Looked at the lease and recommend the lease. Talking about this for several months now. Any questions concerning this resolution, 2024-10-06? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Now down to item number 12, consideration of Resolution 2024-10-07, which is to recognize Sevier County emergency telecommunications as first responders. You have that resolution before you. Motion second to approve that resolution. And I'm going to recognize Mr. Andrew Whaley to come and tell you what this resolution does.
You may want to set the timer there for me, Mayor. I don't, anyway, appreciate y'all for your consideration on this today. And I guess that just looking back, it may be working at the ambulance service hall those years ago, starting back in 93. And, and I've done a lot of talking on the radio and I've done a lot of listening to the radio and was there before 911 was ever a thing. We did self-dispatch and they would call on the phone. And how we, how glad we were to be able to move forward with that. And, and you might think, well, what does, you know, are they not already a first responder? How are they recognized? And if you look at a federal level, these folks are not recognized as first responders, even a state level. And we would be one of the first, I think maybe even the third municipality to recognize our telecommunicators, our dispatchers, our call-takers as first responders. I think it's very important. They are the foundation of every call. I was in New York City and I got to go through the, the 911 memorial, if you've ever been in. When you walk in the door, playing overhead, you hear the dispatchers talking on the, on the phone and on the radio the entire journey through that museum. And so they were a huge part of that emergency and really didn't, they got recognition. There's a place over there in the corner set up for them. But anytime we have a big, large-scale event or whatever, the phone rang at Central 86,000 times in 2023. So just to put you in perspective. And what this does, it just gives us a, a platform. It gives a kind of your blessing on us trying to move forward with legislation at a state level and a federal level. And there's things that are going on right now that, of course, everything gets attached to these type bills because they, they look pretty good and it stalls up committee. But what this resolution also does, it, it does go with the trends and it puts your all's support up with us at the state level and the federal level. And I just appreciate your consideration and take any questions that you have. But we have the Sheriff's Department included in this and then our 911 dispatchers down at Central. And we're glad to see who all's here that are representing our two agencies. And they work really, really well together interdepartmentally. Couldn't ask for a finer group of people, so.
Any questions concerning this resolution? Thank you, Andrew. Any question from the Commission? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Any Commissioner like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Resolution has been properly adopted. Before we go on to the next item, I think we have a number of dispatchers here and and Now, we are on item number 13, notaries, Madam Clerk.
We have 35 notaries, Mayor.
35 notaries. We have a motion and a second to approve those notaries. We've moved, we're moving to the screen to show vote on the notaries. Any, we have a motion second to approve. Commissioners, would you cast your votes? Any comments or questions concerning notaries? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote?
Twenty-two yes votes.
Twenty-two yes votes. Notaries are approved. So that concludes our business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor of adjourned, please rise. We're adjourned.